...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's see, this is the January 17th regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First up on the agenda is to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of January 3rd, 2018. May I have a motion to accept?
A motion?
A second?
Second.
Any suggestions or comments?
No, I look at them, they look good to me.
All right.
Agreed.
Then, that's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right. All right, next up is some special recognition. And this is recognition of a Fairfield Ludlow High School student for participating in the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Low Cool Government Scholarship Program. And I believe we have Mr. Kevin Maloney here from, where's Kevin? From CCM. If you would come up and fill us in on what this program is about and how you picked your winner.
The Connecticut Conference of Municipalities for the first time ran a statewide contest inviting all high school and middle school students to express their viewpoint about what they see of value with Connecticut towns and cities, local governments. We provided a small scholarship this year. We're hopeful that the contest will grow. This year, we had about 100 students participate, which is both a good number but a small number, and we're hopeful that's growing. And the winner from Fairfield is Michael Holtz. He's here with his mom this evening. Just want to invite them up so we can present you with the certificate for participating. Michael, you should feel really good about, you know, being one of only 100 that, you know, participated today. And get a picture with the first selectman around.
And the board, actually?
Oh, the board, yeah. Why don't you all come around?
You've got that? And Michael, we have a certificate from the town for you also, so we'd all be thrilled to present that to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And then why don't you just turn around this way, and then we'll get you in the mats and...
We got you too.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you want to say anything to the group?
Uh, sure.
Okay, just stay behind the podium and just speak to the Board of Selectmen. There's a camera over there that will catch you.
Well, I would, I would just, I would just like to start off by saying that I am very honored to be, to be, to be receiving this, to be receiving this recognition. And, and, and the reason, and the reason for my entry is because, is because I thought, I thought that the actual concept of how, of how the government supports, supports local events in, in the town is very, very cool. And, and also, and also based, based on my entry, I also found, I also found that there were many different types of parallels between, between government, between supporting the local government and also, and also, and also supporting local farmers as well.
All right. Well, thank you. And again, congratulations. Any comments from the board?
No, congratulations, Michael. Well done. And as Kevin mentioned earlier, it's out of 100 people who applied. Michael, that's, that's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Michael, congratulations to you and your family. It's a great honor. And I really like your interest in government, locally and at the state level. And it's really nice to see a fine young man take such an interest in what we do. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I both concur with my colleagues, but I'd also say that given, we put you on the spot to talk to the whole town out here in front of the podium, that you were very cool, poised, and thank you for your remarks on that basis. That's not easy to do. So, very much appreciate that. And good luck in your future. You made our town proud. You made our town proud. All right, moving on. Item five. We have a resignation from the Historic District Commission. Thomas Daley, Democrat, 10 Southport Woods Drive. His term was 11/12 to 11/17. It says his resignation date was January 3rd, 2018, but I really, it's my understanding that his term ended November 30th, 2017. Next up, we have a couple of appointments to hear. Consider and act upon the following appointments. For the Fire Commission, John Branley, Democrat, 1475 Burr Street, for a term of 11/17 to 11/22. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, agreed. Mr. Branley's here. Any comments from the board?
I've got to know John over the last two years. I'm surprised he has time with all the stuff he volunteers around town to do. I witnessed his work ethic firsthand. I think he's a great addition.
Good. Mr. Branley?
I completely agree. Congratulations, John. You are a welcomed addition to the Fire Commission. Amongst everything else you do for our town, we're very proud of you. Thank you very much.
I think, and again, I'll concur with that, but also say that, A, if you want something done, you've got to give it to a busy person. But, second, I think Mr. Branley brings a great perspective because of his work in the nonprofit sector for years. He's been very concerned about those in our community that need the most. And I'm thrilled that he's volunteering to help our community, community out and provide leadership on our Fire Commission in doing that.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you for stepping up. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment to the H. Smith Richardson Clubhouse Building Committee. This does require RTM approval. Rodney Van Duzen, Democrat, 157 Long Dean Road. May I have a motion to accept?
So, vote.
A second?
Second.
Is Mr. Van Duzen here? No? He wasn't. He had a note here that he might not be able to make it. Any discussion from the board?
Thank him for wanting us to serve.
Yep. He's got a great background and, you know, thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, Mr. Van Duzen, I had a chance to talk to him when we were going through the original appointments. He served on a Town Facilities Commission, was part of the subcommittee that reviewed the Smith Richardson Golf Clubhouse. He's very familiar with the need, what's taking place, and I think it's great that he's able to serve. We had somebody step down on the committee, so I'm glad we were able to replace that person with somebody with this kind of experience. So, let's see, any other further comments from the board?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, congratulations and thank you, Mr. Van Duzen. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment to the Harbor Commission. This also, Harbor Management Commission, this also requires RTM approval. First up is Jacob Herschler, Democrat, 1226 Peakwood Avenue, term 11/17 to 11/19. And this is for an alternate position. This seat has been vacant for a while. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion?
A second?
Second.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Jim, thanks for your willingness to serve the town.
All right.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Herschler's here. We had a great conversation. I want to thank you for stepping up. You did answer the question. We weren't quite sure what your political party was, I think, at that time. So, thank you very much for, we clarified that here on the agenda, so, but, again, thank you very much. This is a very, as we talked, a very important commission, especially in the next few years as we look at, there's a state port authority now that is providing some additional funding. So, we have a harbor management plan that's going in place, as well as some dredging that we're trying to get done. So, two very important projects, as well as the ongoing management of the Harbor Commission. So, thank you very much for stepping up. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Again, thank you. All right, and then next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, Mr. Ted Schwartzman, unaffiliated, 60 Lally Boulevard. And this is to, also for the Harbor Management Commission, and this is to fill a vacancy by Cheryl Becock, whose term expired. May we, may I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Thank you for serving.
Another volunteer with a great background, and we welcome, welcome him to the commission.
And again, the Harbor Management Commission, my comments stay the same. It's at some very important time that we have in front of us on this. And I want to thank Mr. Schwartzman for stepping up to do that. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwartzman. Mr. Schwartzman's not here, right? I didn't see him. Okay, just wanted to confirm. All right, next up, item seven. To hear a FEMA CRS Progress Report on Action Items Outlined in the Regional Hazard Mitigation Grant. Who do we have presenting this? All right. Please introduce yourself to the camera and the folks at home.
Okay, great.
And fill us in.
All right. My name's Emmeline Harrigan. I'm the Assistant Planning Director. And as you know, we were accepted into the CRS program last year. It's a program through the National Flood Insurance Program that's voluntary, and if we go above and beyond the minimum requirements, it results in savings for our homeowners who have flood insurance policies in the community. So, we are, we are a CRS 8, and that provides over $400,000 in flood insurance premium savings to our residents. As part of that process, there's a five-year kind of very large renewal that happens. But every year, we're required to provide information to FEMA to show that we are maintaining the activities that established our rating to begin with. And so, that includes, you know, collecting documentation like elevation certificates, showing that we're doing public outreach, that we provide flood, flood map information to the general public, as well as also reviewing our hazard mitigation plan. And that's part of why we're here today. Within the hazard mitigation plan that was completed by MetroCog in 2014, there's a section for the town of Fairfield that includes action items. And those action items, we need to review to make sure that we're making progress. So, that's what we've provided to you today. It includes things like the fact that we joined the CRS, that we are helping homeowners to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to elevate homes in the community, that we're maintaining our flood hazard regulations, that we're also reviewing projects for positive stormwater mitigation, and that we're also actually, as a community, instituting other structural projects, such as some of the ones that we received hazard mitigation grant funding for, such as hardening the wastewater treatment facility to ensure that that's safe from future flood risk, as well as, I think, the berm project that's going to surround the big pile. And other, and other planning studies that are identified in the report that was forwarded to you. And we're required to present this to you, so that's what, that's why we're here tonight.
Good. Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Do you work with the Flood Erosion Board?
We've, we've met with them before, and I know that Laura Puli, who's our senior civil engineer in the engineering department, she works with them very closely, and she reviewed the action items as part of the report.
And then you said we are CRS 8?
Yes.
Okay. Is it the higher we go, the more savings the town gets?
The lower we go, the more savings.
The lower we go, okay.
Yeah.
So, what, what are the objectives we need to achieve to get to the 7th and the 6th?
Well, they're...
And are they achievable?
Some of them may not be. So, there are some areas where they do a lot of acquisitions within the floodplain, and those are usually the communities that are CRS 1s. And they really prohibit a lot of new development within the floodplain, and that's just not realistic for a community as old as ours with, you know, the existing development that we have.
Full development.
Right. But, you know, there are, the, the community that has, has the highest rating currently is Stamford, which has a CRS 7. So, they're, you know, they're right in line with us, just a step ahead. So, their community, their residents get a 15% annual savings. We get a 10%.
All right. Stanford spent, I think, the equivalent, today's dollars, almost a billion dollars in their berm and in their floodgates along those lines.
And they also have their hurricane barriers, so they get some extra points that we don't have the potential at this point to achieve.
Sorry. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you for being here. I know you talked a little bit about the 15, or the 10% and the $400,000. Can you talk a little bit more about that and how our citizens can make sure that they participate, or how they can communicate with you to take full advantage of, of your efforts ongoing?
Well, they should definitely check their flood insurance premium, check their statement that they receive. It should clearly identify on that statement that they're getting that discount.
Okay.
And certainly, they should check in with their, whoever their agent is, to ensure that they do get that. If they need any correspondence from the town, we're happy to provide it, such as the proof, you know, our, our congratulations letter that was sent to First Selectman Tetro that shows that we are part of the program.
So, if... But, I think, to directly answer your point, it's my understanding they don't have to do a thing.
They don't.
It comes through on their premium automatically.
It should, absolutely. But they should double-check if they have any concerns.
Okay. Okay. And as far as general communication out from, from your organization to them, or them back to you, is there, is there a recommended way for that to take place?
Individual homeowners?
Yeah.
They're always welcome to come and see us and plan and zoning.
Okay.
Or call us.
Okay.
And we're happy to provide whatever flood map information that we can...
Mapping information, general information, and things like that. So, run that right through... Is there a mailing that goes out to them?
There's a mailing that goes out to the repetitive loss areas within our community. So, properties are repetitive loss if they've suffered more than one claim over a certain cumulative value.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we are, we, as part of the annual recertification, we are required to do a repetitive loss mailing. And so, we're sending that to about 2,000 homes.
Okay.
Just to expand on the question...
Jim, if you'd...
And introduce yourself. Jim Webb, Planning Director. One of the requirements that got us a fair number of points is, are the town's homepage has a flood information tab right on the, on the very front page. And if residents click on that, that directs them, they can plug in their address to see whether they're likely to be in or not in a flood zone. So, that's another way that they can check that out.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
But if they need help, we're happy to help.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And next up is the non-recurring capital. To hear, consider certain town non-recurring capital projects. We're not going to vote on this today. We normally consider the Board of Ed and the town projects together. That makes for a rather long meeting.
Okay.
We thought we would break that up by at least reviewing the town projects now and doing the Board of Ed projects at our next meeting. There's also, I believe in your packet, there is a bonding resolution.
Yeah.
So, you can review that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you can see where these items are being classified in terms of, you know, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years in terms of bonding.
Right.
But we won't be voting on that. We won't vote on that until we have the full review of the projects. But that way, you have all the information, and we can at least review the town projects here today. So, that's what we're up to. So, we don't have to vote on anything today, but please, let's do our best to get all of our questions answered. Certainly, if anything comes up next week, we can ask those, but let's do our best to get them done here today.
Great.
So, with that, let's look at what we have here first. We'd like to kick things off. You want to take an order here? What do we have?
Sorry, you're too slow.
Oh, we're polite.
And Anthony, you're looking at the, this is the Smith Richardson?
Smith Richardson.
Item was kind of the number two item in our packet?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Anthony Calibris, Director of Parks and Recreation. We are before you tonight, looking to get approved for $100,000 for renovations to the Smith Richardson Golf Course, specifically the 16th hole. This is part of our 10-year plan that we presented back in 2010, started implementing in 2011. We are going into year eight. This was year eight that was put on pause last year. So, you guys did hear this presentation last year. Again, it's just for the, to reshape and rebuild the 16th green. Again, part of the, the plan. The green essentially right now is too small. The tee box area is too small by USGA standards. We're just trying to expand that. We do get a lot of play, and it makes it tough when the, you don't have a large green to place the tee, the, sorry, the holes on the green. You get more wear and tear on the green. So, having a larger green gives you less maintenance and repair. So, essentially, that is what we're trying to do with this project by expanding the green.
Okay, just to be clear, you mentioned tee box and green.
Yep, it's both.
Okay.
It's both.
Any questions from the board?
Any plans to fix the slope of the green?
I agree.
I mean, that's a, that's a round killer.
Well, if I can follow on that?
Yeah.
When we're done, how many strokes per round will they save?
Ah, that I don't know. All about pace of play for me, so, I'm sorry.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts?
Just a quick question, so the year they're in, just to recap, is the year that we skipped over?
We skipped over last year, yes.
So, this is just the single request for this year? This is not a catch-up in any way?
Nope.
And, and the $100,000 is consistent with years past?
Correct.
Just, just in general, for the past few years that we've done it, have we come, where have we finished up on the $100,000 budget or so? Have the final cost for each of these little segments come in right on the $100,000, or which side of it?
I'm going to bring Peter Grace up, who would know that firsthand. I am unaware of us going over, so...
Just direction.
Peter Grace, Superintendent Smith. No, we're right on, right on target. Actually, I think we're a little bit ahead, to be honest with you.
Okay.
The big, the big one is obviously the clubhouse, which has nothing to do with this.
Right.
But this is, this is the 16th green that everybody's been griping about, and there's no pin placements, and there's warrant or, or wear and tear on it. So, that's basically what this money's going to. And, you know, if we have a little extra, we can do some cart paths. We just got all new carts, and, you know, the cart paths will do some damage to the carts if you hit it wrong. So, it's, just to continue the 10, the 10-year plan, this is year eight, and go forward from there.
Okay. I think this is, again, as you both mentioned, this is part of a 10-year plan that was laid out. It's year eight is part of that. So, we've gotten a similar presentation literally each year. We're staying on track in terms of taking that, rather than spending a million dollars all at once, we spread that out over 10 years, and this is part of that progression.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Joe, why don't you come and talk to us about the...
I'd be glad to yell to Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Sorry.
The elevator is number one.
Just trying to get us back in sequence.
Yeah, right? Joseph Michelangelo, Director of Public Works. When the Fairfield Woods Branch Library was originally constructed in 1968, the original entrance was on Fairfield Woods Road, and that's where the, the main entrance was. And there was a two-story open atrium, not much different than we have on each side of Independence Hall. When the addition was performed in 1990, they added on to the south side of the building, made that the new entrance. They reconfigured, took advantage of this space, and installed an elevator and some conference rooms and some storage rooms. So, it was a great idea in 1990, but the configuration of the elevator doesn't meet today's standards. I described it as awkward to get into that elevator. You have to literally manually open three doorways on hinges, two doorways and a gate. And on one side, the entrance is on the south side; on the other level, it's on the north side. So, what this project would do is put in a ADA-compatible elevator that is all automatic doors, similar to what we see in most elevators, where your turning radius, you could get in there, you could get out of there fairly easy. The, the main floor of the library is basically a two-floor library with a mezzanine, but it's basically the main floor. The bottom floor, there's a three-conference room, they have a large teen center, they have the, the kitchen at, the staff area. So, there is a definite reason to want to get to the lower level, and currently, this doesn't serve the needs.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
I'm all set.
Just a couple of quick questions. You talk about, in item number four, you talk about the reliability as a 6 out of 10. Just, how'd you get to that?
Well, there's, you know, the, when you, when they cart, when they built the original elevator, when they, they divvied up the space in the atrium there, they, you know, they gave themselves an elevator shaft. They literally built an elevator shaft in the existing building. But we're going to have to reconfigure that. We're going to have to steal room from, steal area from a storage room, from a conference room. So, besides the mechanical, electrical part of an elevator, there's some structural, architectural work involved there, too. So, we know what an elevator car costs, we know what the, you know, hooking it up to the mechanics and electricals are. We're not really sure of, you know, you know, taking down this wall and putting a new header and building another wall, you know, two feet away. The architectural hasn't been done on that yet. So, we have some reasonably good prices, but that's why we have that high contingency of $50,000, just to, you know, to give us a little assurance that the project will come in. So, originally, it was $275,000. That was the original number in the waterfall for the last several years. Took a little, you know, in, in getting ready for this presentation, did some legwork between our staff, the elevator contractor, an engineer took, took a look at it. So, with the amount of variables in it, we feel the $50,000 would address some of the uncertainties going forward.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense, as does the, you know, the, the $325 total. I guess my question was, the way I read this was, it sounded like you did some type of reliability study against some other towns, and I just wasn't sure how you arrived at 6 out of 10.
It's, it's, it's not scientific, but once you...
True.
You know, if, if we had a, you know, an opinion of probable cost from, from an engineer that, you know, sunk his teeth into it and spent some man-hours in it, then it's probably a 9 out of 10. But once again, we haven't gotten to that level where we have that confidence level where we could say it's within 5% or whatever. So, if, if we spent $15,000 in engineering, yeah, the number becomes more, we could pinpoint it a little better, and we haven't done that yet. it a little better, we haven't done that yet.
Okay. And you do feel that with the uncertainties that you've described, the wall, the architectural things, you do feel that the $50,000 is in the zone to cover that stuff?
Correct.
I think I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I've had a chance to use this elevator as a demo a couple times and certainly it's not easy to, to manage getting in. I think that, one is that I look at this project as not only doing a much better job of meeting the ADA requirements that we have, but importantly, from a safety standpoint, if there's an emergency, making it much more, much easier for someone in a lower level that needs to use the elevator to get out. It's currently a little bit of a challenge to do that and getting in both ways. So I think this is a very important project, both from the intent of the ADA rules, but also from a life safety standpoint in terms of providing emergency egress from the lower level. So that's it. Board's okay? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I would suggest we all kind of hang on to our documentation for the next meeting so that, yeah, we have this with us. Please. All right, next up, Chief, I think you're.
Good evening. Dennis McCarthy from the Fire Department. So you have before you two projects. The first is for vehicle lifts. As you know, we maintain a apparatus maintenance facility at the Jennings Road Firehouse. The lifts that are there, we received from DBW. Those were manufactured in 1987. We got them from DBW in 94. They have served the department well. Time to replace them, upgrade them with modern safety features and weight capacity. So as, as you can imagine, the weight of vehicles have changed dramatically since 1987 to today and we are no longer have the weight capacity in the existing lifts. And there are a number of safety issues in the older lifts that certainly would be addressed by their replacement. In particular, the amount of wiring that's across the floor, interconnecting the various lifts, so they all lift the apparatus simultaneously and uniformly, would be done wirelessly or with wiring that occurs at the upper level as opposed to on the floor, so there's not a tripping hazard. There have been a number of, there have been several cases of lift failures and certainly we want to make sure that we are ahead of any of that potential. So that is the first item and answer any questions before we go to the second.
You're all set? Questions on that?
No, I mean, you touched on safety. If you could just elaborate just a little bit on where you think the additional safety comes into play or how much, how, how important it is.
So consider that the mechanics, there, we have two mechanics that work full-time, one mechanic working by himself underneath a 65,000-pound piece of equipment. So his safety or their safety is certainly an important consideration. It's the interlock so that there can't be failures of the lifts. What we have done, we've borrowed from the town of Trumbull, some safety stands so that we have that additional support with the existing lifts. That would be integrated into the lifts that we're purchasing. That and the elimination of trip hazards is an important consideration and, and the weight capacity, as I mentioned. We are no longer able to safely lift within the design limits of the equipment, the ladder truck, the quint and some of our apparatus.
How much heavier are today's trucks than 20, 30 years ago?
About 20,000 pounds.
Are they really that?
We've seen, we've seen the change over time.
Wow.
That, that much increase. When you think of everything that's built into, the equipment not only is more complicated, but structurally much stronger, just as cars have gotten heavier or, or the design of cars and fire apparatus with roll protection, things like that, add a lot of weight to the apparatus.
I think the other, trucks seem to have gotten bigger, too.
They have gotten bigger.
Trouble fitting them into our smaller fire houses.
We, we keep adding to the toolbox and it creates a bigger vehicle.
You bet.
Thank you.
The second item is the replacement of the command car. We have our practice is to replace the car every five years. By the time it's approved and specked out and purchased, we'll have close to 100,000 miles on the current car at five years. The car will continue to serve the department for an additional five years as a reserve. So if we call people in during storms or when there is a major fire and we bring a second commander in, he will operate out of the car that gets retired by this one. And this will give us five years of reliable service. The car responds to 2,500 calls a year, gets used night and day, 365, around the clock, and we need a reliable piece of equipment.
All right, any comments, questions?
We only have one vehicle on this list for the entire town?
This is the ship commander's car, so it's, it's the one that the Assistant Chief who was, who's supervising the ship.
I guess what I'm saying, like, public works vehicles, the police vehicles?
Those are, those are in the budget?
They're in the budget.
So within our, within our police budget, there's a purchase of 10 police cars. As they get bought, the older cars get moved out and handed out to Public Works.
Right.
And handed out, I think, to the Fire Department in some cases, so the, the other vehicles get.
So I guess, I guess I'm saying, why wouldn't this go in the budget?
It exceeds $100,000.
Just because it's over $100,000.
Over $100,000, okay. What about public works trucks?
We made a decision at some point to move those from non-recurring, where they were for some set of history, I don't have them, starting about five years ago, we started to move those from non-recurring into the budget. We built that up to about four trucks in the budget and then with our current budget issues, we have reduced those trucks in the budget.
Right, so I, I hear what you're saying. I guess I would say, I mean, it's, it's $6,000 over the bondable amount. Do we put it in the budget? And if we're putting a vehicle in, why wouldn't we put more vehicles in and utilize our AAA bond rating and alleviate some of the tax pressure off of the residents for that?
Yeah, at, at this point, we're trying to keep the number of purchases to a minimum. This is something that, as you can see, is coming up on our Public Works, we're monitoring that carefully and, you know, we will have to reconstruct our plan on how to build that back up. But you're absolutely right, that's, that's a good point and we will have to look at probably as part of our catch-up plan on Public Works, as we did initially to get started, have to go back and bond some of those while we're adding them into the budget. And again, you're trying to balance between adding them in and minimizing the tax increase.
Right.
There's been a, you know, simply put, with the state reduction in revenues, the quickest, fastest thing to do is not buy things. Then we'll have to go back and, and move them up. We hope to do that and kind of start to build that in over the next two, three years so that we'll have, push things off for two, three years.
No, I agree with the logic on it. I guess I would just say Public Works dumped up over 200,000, 260,000, whatever it is. We would pay cash for on a one-year building in the budget, but a five-year vehicle at 106,000 we're going to bond for.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if that's five years.
Well, it's just a five-year first, first-line service, then it goes five-year second line and then we'll do another five-year as a utility truck. So we're getting a long-term out of this deal.
All right, so, all right. On one hand, it's probably just a management decision as to what we're doing for this year to get through that. It's not, if we were buying a group of these every year, we'd probably do just what you said and make it like Public Works, instead of buying these once in a while. It's, we're trying to level out, the goal overall is to kind of level out the tax increases and level out the budget. So if we're buying these once in a while, that can create a hiccup every five years. If we're, if we were buying one of these every year, then yes, you're absolutely right, that would make it a much easier decision to put it in the budget, but we're not buying one of these every year.
I got you.
That's all. So it's, I don't think, I'm not trying to say if there's a right or wrong way, it's just a decision on how to proceed. Any, any further comments or questions on your side?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And I think I'm good, we've had a chance to talk through this before. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, next up, who do we have? Is this from the, Brian, I think this is you?
Hello, Brian Carey, Conservation Director. I'm here to talk about the Engineering Investigation Design and Permitting Services for the Railroad Bridge Tag Gate Structure in Dyke, which is actually located off of Old Dam Road behind the football field down there. So basically, what, what I'm asking for is money to start the process of the replacement of the existing triple gate tide gates, is what they've been called forever. It's a, it's a set of three culverts with self-regulating tide gates that actually work in conjunction with the dyke to provide flood protection for South Pine Creek Road and up all the way to Thorpe Street. The system was initially installed in between 1980 and '83 and it's just passed its useful life. We've, we re-lined the, the actual pipes under the dyke in 2008 and that basically was a stop-gap measure, but at this point, the bulkhead is deteriorating and we actually did engineering analysis of it, of actually all the tide gate systems in town in 2016. And this was the second one on that list to replace in, as part of our plan. I was here about, in August timeframe, we actually got a grant for a similar project on Riverside Drive, because we were able to reprogram some money, but, but there is no grant funding available for this project at this time. So the, the funding, which is $225,000, is just to do the engineering, design, geotechnical work and modeling that's required to permit the project to go forward. I'd be coming back at a later point, once this is designed, for a larger capital request to actually implement the project. But this is critical infrastructure, it's almost 40 years old. It protects a lot of properties. Emmeline Harrigan was in here earlier, talking about the CRS program. These are the things that, you know, help to lower our, lower our exposure on that. So again, trying to get it designed, come back here with engineering costs after the design and provide you with a solid number at that point.
Any questions from the board?
Have you worked with the flood erosion board on this?
Yes. So we, we have gone over the capital plan. They'd actually be involved with any design work that's being accomplished during the process. Their input would obviously be paramount. They're involved right now with the Riverside Drive project. Talk Dick and keep him abreast of what's going on. There's not too many ways to skin this cat. We're going to look at trying to eliminate one of the upgrading culvert systems that's a bit redundant at this point when it was put in, so maybe trying to eliminate a future cost liability as part of this project as well.
I know, you just mentioned it's $225,000. I know I've seen that on waterfall charts and such.
Yep.
I can't find it in the 14 points.
Yeah, I, I looked at that. I have to add that in at the bottom, I apologize for that.
Okay, if you would, just so everybody's clear when they're looking at this. Any further comments from the board?
No, thanks.
Any comments from the public? Please come up and just please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Dick Mahusky, I'm the Chairman of Flood and Erosion Control Board. I just want to reiterate what Brian said. This, these tide gates are our number-one defense against coastal flooding. It's important to keep them in good working order because when we need them to work, they have to work. The waterfall chart, I believe there are a couple of replacement of tide gate structures on the waterfall chart. I think that grew out of the study from 2016, so I would just encourage you, when you do ultimately vote on this, to vote in favor of it and also keep in mind that going forward, we have a continuing program to replace the tide gates.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I had a question, I'm not sure if it's for Dick or Brian or both of you.
We, we do work together.
That's right. Certainly appreciate that. Back when we were talking about the Riverside, you would have given us kind of a, kind of a lesson on how a, how the tide gate works and how it directs the water, therefore protecting the neighborhood. Could you just touch on that for a minute and just walk through kind of the mechanics of it?
Yeah, so, so the tide gates, Tom Stanky actually did the design and patented the, the self-regulating tide gates. So the, based on adjustments that are on the tide gates, they can close at a certain tidal elevation. And I'm not going to say there's an exact science about that, there's a lot of trial and error to get it exactly right, based on, you know, the amount of flooding, tidal flooding you want to let into a certain area. But, you know, we're able to get elevations of, you know, the tidal marsh and then based off that, we're able to make adjustments into the tide gate that allows just enough flooding on a normal tidal cycle that will close the gate at that certain elevation. Right now, most of them are set at about two and a half feet elevation.
Two and a half, okay.
So it will close, slam shut at that elevation. But when we have a big coastal storm coming, we'll actually go out and put the gates into a manual setting where it won't allow any flooding to come in and will act as only a normal flap gate, where it will only allow, you know, inland storm water to actually come out.
Okay.
So in, normally in anticipation of a large coastal storm, inland storm, which would be the, you know, the perfect storm type of scenario.
Right.
We would actually go out and close the tide gates in several days in advance and allow the tidal marshes to actually drain, which would allow, you know, more storage capacity for actual storm, you know, freshwater input into the marsh.
Right.
So that, that's kind of the, the dual purposes that they serve.
Right, right.
You know, on a normal tidal, you know, middle-of-the-summer tidal event, you know, they, people don't even really notice the action of the.
The in and the out.
The in and the out. It was only, it would only be if they were to completely remove the tide gates that you would see on a normal tidal flooding, you know, normal tide.
Right.
That people would have flooding in their backyards and Riverside Drive and, you know, up in the South Pine Creek area marshes. But, you know, these things have been installed since, you know, really in the early 80s. It's just kind of commonplace now in the town. We, you know, we just recently put self-regulating tide gates at the, at the dyke that was installed behind the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Right.
You know, when they first go in, we do get, we do get calls from people saying, you know, because things do tend to change a little bit with the, with the given tide cycles. But even that one, it hasn't really been a problem because we have it so at the lowest setting and then we'll kind of move it up a little bit until we.
Get it to where it's bad, it's correct.
Yeah, until we, and I'm not going to say there's a complete science about that because, you know, it, it's a little trial and error. But luckily, our department and ours, my staff has years and years of experience, to the point where when the manufacturer came out and we were doing the specification for the dyke system and we were showing it around town to all the other tide gate systems, he, he was shocked. He said he's never seen a town take care of these things to this degree. Most of them are set it and forget it and he's normally called only in when they're failing because no one has maintained them in years. So it's a testament to really how important they are for our town and, you know, how it's, you know, allowed a lot of the restoration of the marshes that, you know, we kind of notice, we take kind of, forgetting it now when we drive around, but if you were looking at this in the 60s and 70s, it would have been a different view shed, especially like Oldfield Road and Riverside, Turney Creek area.
Sure. Well, that's a great compliment for you, for your team, you know. There's probably, probably some towns that don't take that proactive measure, turning them into a one-way before the storm, therefore they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, the state has a history of that, too, in our town. I'm not going to say where, but there's a lot of calls to them to come and maintain their infrastructure, so.
Well, good, thank you for the refresh, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, any further questions? Any further comments? All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, let's just please hold on to those. In your package, you'll notice we have the bond resolutions that we'll discuss in a bit more detail.
Yep.
Next time around. All right, so next up is to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $33,479.26. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'm making a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion?
No, it looked good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, we had tentatively scheduled a private executive session, a follow-on to a discussion we had a couple weeks back, a couple meetings back. The town attorney was not ready for that today, so we will not be having that. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon any other business.
Just a quick.
Go ahead.
Sorry. A quick question, are we talking about the, the IT data center?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Relocation?
The, our IT manager is out sick today.
We do that next time around.
So we're going to have to catch that next time around.
Good.
Nope, that was it. So next up then will be item 11, to hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this meeting. None that I know of. Any comments?
Our next Board of Selectment meeting has been changed to the last.
January 31st.
January 31st. Two weeks from tonight. Two weeks from tonight, yes.
So we'll not have the first meeting in February, which was originally scheduled February 7.
Yeah.[1768.26]